Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, October 21st Gladstone Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to call the order, so roll call votes, I mean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Langston.
Present.
Commissioner Carlson. Commissioner Grau. Commissioner Brennan.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Present. Let's do the flag salute. Okay, our consent agenda, all items listed below are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a commission member or person in the audience requests specific items be removed from the consent agenda for discussion prior to the time the commission votes on the motion to adopt the consent agenda. Item number one, or excuse me, approval of September 16 meeting minutes. Item number two, monthly planning report. Item number three, public hearing file DR dash 24 dash 01. And item number four, public hearing for file number DR dash 25 dash 05, and then business from the public. Okay, first item, approval of September 16, meeting minutes.
Madam, I'd make a motion to approve the September meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Brennan and seconded by Commissioner Langston. Roll call vote, please, Tammy.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan.
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, meeting minutes approved. Okay, item number two, our monthly planning report.
Thank you, Chair Smith. The planning report in your packet is for September of this year. You did ask just before this meeting that we go through the building permits and talk about those individually, just for the record, so everyone knows what types of applications the city's been looking at. We've had on 82nd Drive, a new veterinarian office in an existing office space, so that's an interior conversion. On West Berkeley, 280 West Berkeley, a new garage, all setbacks being met for that building. On 1055 Clayton Way, an interior kitchen remodel with no changes to the exterior of the building. At 1230 Windsor Drive, we had an application to add bedrooms for an adult foster home is what it has been determined that that use is, so that you'll see that on your next planning report, it's come through several more times and we've determined that it meets the Oregon revised statute standards to be an adult foster care home. 18800 Portland Ave is the demolition of the modular buildings at the high school. The triplex on 6430 Caldwell Road is listed twice, went through two different iterations for review, but is meeting the city's standards. And I think that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. I greatly appreciate that. Any questions or comments, commissioners? Next item, number three, public hearing for file DR dash 24 dash 01. Modification from previously approved design review conditions of approval for a two-story expansion to a one-story expansion of existing IC SB building 420 and 430 West Arlington. And Tong Wu, am I saying that correctly? Thank you. And Richard Barbis of AIA Architects LLC. Now, one of the commission members was going to make a suggestion, which might be appropriate at this time.
Uh, yeah, just based on the fact that I think we're waiting on an architect to be here, potentially would rearrange and cover agenda item number four first, and then agenda item number three.
Staff, does that meet with?
Yes, the applicants for agenda item number four were planning to join remotely, so as long as they weren't planning in some time ahead to not be here right at time. The other thing we could do, because he said he would be here at 6:40, is I still have my staff report to give, so timing wise, that should work, but for him to be able to see the staff report is important too. So I'm fine to do either way, as long as, and there, there's at least one applicant from item four online that we could ask if that works for them. Does that seem reasonable? He's almost here. Maybe we, well, what do you, yeah.
Can we just pause for a second? And I know this was on, in the planning report, but the city council saw the code updates on the 14th.
Yes.
Did you have any feedback from that session?
Oh, sure. They approved the comments that you moved forward. There was some discussion about actually other parts of the code that weren't being open for discussion at the time, so one thing that in particular I made a note of was councillor Garlandon wanted us to look at our trash enclosure standards and make sure we're specifically addressing restaurants. Right now, that falls into another category that doesn't specifically address the needs of restaurants, and that restaurants may have a higher need, so that was one item. But otherwise, they're, they, they talked about defining high efficiency sprinklers or irrigation, and then they decided not to define it. So that was the only other thing that I think was a potential change, and then they decided not to. We did make one change, and it's escaping my brain right at the moment. But I can pull that up. Maybe councillor Brennan can ask his question or statement while we pull it up.
I was going to ask about the trash enclosures. Would that be something that we could address when we standardize food cart pods, potentially?
Yes, that would be actually a really appropriate time to do that, I think. Yes, because we'd, that would be another use. We could say restaurants or something, food cart pods or something, or if we determine they're the same. Let me just pull up the council decision from last week. I know I have it handy. Yeah, I can pull it up. Let's see. So last Tuesday. Oh, it was to change the street tree list. The name of the street tree list when we started this whole packet was the Clackamas County Street Tree List. But in the interim time, the city has adopted its own street tree list, so we changed Clackamas County to Gladstone for the street tree list. It was, it was a minor change, but giving ourselves control over that street tree list for future applicants.
And the facilities came up with that list? Our, our, our facilities department did?
They, yes, so there was an ordinance passed earlier this year to regulate all street trees, so removal of street trees required planting of street trees with new development, and as part of that, they adopted a street tree list.
Regarding the trash enclosures, are they like, was the intent that requiring people to have like larger?
It was more about the size, because right now the code says that your trash enclosure is based on your use, so I'll just open that section, so I can tell you general standards under building. So right now, if you are a office, you need four square feet per thousand gross floor area square feet. You need 10, so four for office, 10 for retail, six for wholesale, four for education, and four for other per thousand square feet. And I think councillor Garlandon was thinking that restaurant might be closer to like retail in need of size, as opposed to being closer like office or education, so should be looked at as a separate category.
Gotcha. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions?
That'll be a good conversation for the food cart conversation as well, because like there's not as much building size, but the traffic of a food cart pod is like, the open space is more like the floor space.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to think about how we define it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If there isn't anything else, I'll go ahead and start the public hearing. Okay, the public hearing is now, now open for the purpose of considering application number DR dash 24 dash 01, it's for modification. And it is now 6:44. Let's see here. The procedure that we would like to follow tonight is the planning department report, applicant testimony, proponent testimony, opponent test opponent testimony, applicant rebuttal, decision to continue or close the hearing, planning commission discussion and decision. Now, does any commission member wish to disqualify himself or herself for any personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight? Or does any commission member wish to report any significant, significant expertise pre-hearing contacts? Please indicate if you visited the site in connection with this application. Commissioner Weiss?
I have done a drive-by before, and I have no concerns.
Okay, Commissioner Langston.
Yep, I've driven by many times. I have no expertise contact and no conflict of interest.
Commissioner Volbada.
I have no conflict of interest. I am very familiar with, with the site.
Okay, Commissioner Brennan.
No expertise contact, no conflicts of interest, and I am pretty familiar with the site. I drive by quite often.
Okay, that is the same for myself. I am very familiar with the site, because I served on the planning commission when we had the first first issue of it. No expertise, and I will be participating. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any commission member to hear this matter? Is there any member of the audience who wishes to question the jurisdiction of this body to act on behalf of the city council on this matter? Okay, Oregon land use law requires that all issues be raised. If the issues are to be appealed, failure to raise the issues at this hearing may invalidate their further appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA. Any party has the right to request a continuance to this hearing, or in the alternative, to have the record left open for seven days. Failure to raise constitutional or other relating, relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient sufficient specificity to allow the commission to respond to the issue and will preclude any action for damages in circuit court. If you are going to testify, please try to address the applicable criteria. Will the staff please present the report?
Thank you, Chair Smith. We are pulling up a PowerPoint presentation about this application. But just a little background information, I know everybody except maybe Commissioner Brennan were here when we did the approval of the expansion of ISUSB. That was early 2024, so I think you might have come right after that, maybe? Or a bit after that. So we are now tonight being asked to look at a modification of the approval. There is a staff level modification of approval in the code, but it doesn't it wasn't clear exactly how and when you apply that, and I, because the applicant was asking for some changes to conditions that were specifically set by the planning commission, I wanted to make sure that you had the chance to see this and make the final decision on the modification. So here we are, the ICSB site on Arlington requesting an approval modification this evening. We're gonna push this button. Hold on, let me try that. This doesn't even seem, oh wait, there it goes. Oh, you did it, okay. Dang, I put a lot of, sorry, it's gonna, there's a lot of like animation in this one. It's gonna be a lot of clicking. So the current approval we have. If we can get that working, that would be helpful. Okay, Tammy, if you don't mind just clicking through and click. So right now, the approval is for a second story addition on a portion of the existing building. Go ahead and click. A rear two-story extension with a two-foot setback to the rear, so that's that white strip along the back rear property line. Next, pedestrian connectivity that runs throughout the site. Next. The landscaping that covers over 15% of the site to meet our code requirement. Next. Oh, you got it. Excellent, thank you. Then the parking and loading area for six vehicles in the trash enclosure, which is shown in the gray there. Loading area, back here, we did add a requirement to be 15 feet from the rear property line to meet our code standard. So the proposed modification does not have a second story component. It's a new one-story building extension with no setback to the rear, so the building gets wider and shorter. The pedestrian connectivity still runs through the site. The landscaping still meets our 15% requirement. The parking and loading area now can fit seven vehicles in the trash enclosure. And I'll talk more about the, the landscaping along the front of the site when we get there, but we no longer need that condition to separate the loading area from the residential, because now there's a building intervening. The current approval is shown here, south and east elevations. So as approved in 2024, this is what the expansion would look like. This is the portion that's existing. This part faces the parking lot here, and then this would be new and this whole second story. Instead, the applicant is proposing to expand just in a single-story way. I'll note the windows here that you probably noticed on your site plan, it goes into details about the windows, because this site is now in our town center, so our old town overlay standards do apply to it. So the applicant's architect, Richard Barbis, who's here this evening, and I worked together to determine how to calculate those windows, making sure that we were meeting the code requirement for the new standards that apply to this building. So this blank wall does not face a street or a parking area, it faces the rain garden. That's why it's permitted to not have windows on that side. And then again, the west and north elevations as approved, so the two-story component here changes into a one-story north and west. These are along the adjacent property lines. So this use continues to be permitted in the C2 zone. It is an existing use. We did find that it is generally meeting the criteria for development in the C2 zone, and now we made findings about the downtown core overlay district, because that has been a change to the property in the time between application approval and now modification. We listed conditions as needed to satisfy the remainder of the criteria that are not being met. And found that it continues to meet the city's criteria for approval. So we do recommend that the planning commission approve the modification. These conditions haven't changed from the original, that the use shall not operate between midnight and 5:00 AM. That would require a conditional use permit. Screening of mechanical equipment, submittal of a photo metric plan, compliance with Public Works comments. And then a revised site plan, this is where a change did occur. So because we now have a single-story building, we, in, in reviewing it, because there's a zero setback required, I thought a single-story building is less impactful than a two-story, so I'm not recommending the setback to the rear any longer. However, we do have a new recommendation about the Old Town Overlay Standard. So our code requires that the building cover 50% of the frontage of the lot, so in this case, 100-foot lot, you'd need 50 feet of building along the front. But that can also be done with things like masonry wall or other type of decorative area separating the parking area from the, the street. If it has amenities for, I believe it says the pedestrian or amenities for people in front of it, so this is if you think about our food cart pod on Arlington, we were able to approve that with Old Town Overlay Standards, because it's a, it's a gathering place in front of the building. The building wasn't required to be pulled all the way up to the front property line. So the applicant is proposing, it's in a lighter color box there along West Arlington to have benches, bench seating for gathering space in that area. And then in addition, because parking areas have to be separated from the street by either a low-wall raised planter strip or landscaping or mixture of the three, we are recommending that that be an added condition, in addition to the benches that the applicant is proposing in that area. So kind of activating that space, using it as a buffer between the parking area and the public street and complying with that standard, that it be active along the sidewalk for 50% of the site. In addition, there wasn't an updated landscaping plan, so we would like to see that submitted before we approve the building permit for this site, just to make sure that it's complying with all of the landscaping specifications for the site. We continue to recommend that the HVAC-type equipment be setback 10 feet from the residential properties to the north. That was a condition prior as well. And then this was also on the previous approval, that bicycle parking needs to be within 30 feet of a main entrance. That's our code requirement. So I'd like to see that on the revised site plan. So I did add one additional slide to show an example of this. This is in Sherwood. They have a very similar requirement for screening the parking area in their old town. So here you can see the tree next to the utility box and then parking behind. That tree and landscaping is, is buffering that parking that's behind it. So that's similar to what our standard is in, in Gladstone, and I did work in Sherwood previously and have to implement, you know, be a staff reviewer on this. I was not part of the downtown core overlay standards, but it's a very similar standard that was adopted here in Gladstone. So kind of an industry standard, I suppose. But I just wanted to give that example, because I could picture it in my mind, and I thought, okay, well, I'll show what it looks like there. I thought that we did an approval where it had a parapet wall, a four-foot-high wall at one point as well, but in Google Earth, I couldn't find it quickly today, so that, that exists out there somewhere as, as well, I believe. So with that, staff will continue to make the recommendation to approve with the, with the original conditions and the special conditions of approval. So with that, I will answer any questions from the planning commission, then we can take testimony.
Commissioners, any questions?
I do. Can you remind me, how tall was the original approved to the top of the second floor?
27 feet.
27, okay, so this is a reduction of 10 feet.
It's, it's down to 15. It's just the parapet wall that's 17.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Weiss, any questions?
Nope.
Commissioner Langston?
Nope.
Commissioner Brennan? Any questions? No? So the, the house that's currently sitting there, that will be the parking lot then?
That is correct. That house will be removed.
Okay, I just want to clarify that, okay. Well, we don't have any other questions. Is the applicant or representative present? Okay, do you wish to add anything to the staff report? No?
Did, did you want to respond to the conditions of approval? Did you have any comments on that? Does that seem acceptable? It sounds like you've worked together.
You need, you need to come up here to the, and press the button and speak, give your name.
Richard Barbis, architect for this project. Working with Heather's been, actually, she's, we work really well together. And appreciate all her work on this, but yeah, and we have no issues with the conditions of approval, so we're glad to go in that direction.
Thank you. And Commissioner Brennan, I know you weren't here last year, but we really put, put the group through a lot of questions last time, and I think this is a really great proposal here, so. Thank you. You did a lot of the work last time. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I guess I would like to know maybe what the commission thinks about a zero setback for basically entire rear property line.
Do we want to maybe just take public testimony, if we have any, before we do discussion?
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
No, that's fine.
That's great. I, I just do recall the neighbors attending last time, so I didn't know if they'd maybe also attend this time.
Do we, do we have any public testimony?
I haven't received any. I'm checking to see anyone online wanting to, to submit public testimony, if you could raise your hand. I do not see anyone raising hands.
Okay. And we don't have anyone in the audience. Okay, no, is there any further questions from any of the commissioners regarding this proposal?
I guess the planner did kind of touch on this, but I'm curious what changed from the original approved plan to right now.
Is it the fact that it's not two stories now?
That, that's correct. That was my reasoning for finding that that, and also that the code doesn't require it.
Yeah.
It was sort of a negotiated, like, it's two stories, the neighbors are here, the applicant's okay with it, but once they went down to one story, because now we've just revised our code also, that anything can come in and be one story and meet the setback. It's when it goes to two stories that we wanted to see it setback, so it seemed consistent with the thinking of that whole process as well.
Okay, so code changes are probably the main driver then?
And the reduced height of the building. Yeah, yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah, no, I think definitely the new proposed, proposals probably much better for the surrounding residents, and they're not as tall, and they don't have anybody lo- lording over them.
And there's no windows in the back where there's zero setback, correct?
There's no windows on either side that shares a property line.
Okay.
Actually, I do have a question about that. Are they required to at least have like the faux windows?
Not on those property lines. Our window requirements are to the public street and to the parking area.
Commissioner Weiss, do you have any questions or input?
None at this point, thank you.
Okay, so we have no public testimony. Probably isn't any reason to do any rebuttal from the applicant at this point. If there is no further testimony, I would entertain a motion to either close the public hearing or continue it to a certain date. What's the pleasure of the commission?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
The, the motion was made by Commissioner Langston and seconded by Commissioner Volbada and Brennan. Tammy, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brennan.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, public hearing is closed at 7:02. Okay, deliberations?
I like this. I'm just, I was recalling the, the very long conversation that we had the last time, last year, just really about the, the height and I wish that the neighbors were here again, just to kind of get their two cents on this, but it feels like this is a really happy solution.
Yeah, I think you guys pretty much answered my question about consensus about the zero setback along the whole property line, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to ask and/or contribute? If not, I entertain a motion. Remember, can you put up that?
Yeah.
With the special conditions, please.
Let's see.
I'll make a motion to approve design review, DR 2401 modification with the following spec- special conditions and the original conditions. Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Langston and seconded by Commissioner Brennan. Tammy, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes. It has been approved.
Okay.
You're welcome. Onto our next item, which is number four, public hearing for file DR 2505 exterior renovation of building addition on Southwest Corner of the of the building and new signage for Ron Tonkin Kia.
Um, what's up?
I need to, we need to open a hearing, don't we?
We do have the same. We do have the same, yes, same script for new hearing. Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, the public hearing is now open for the purpose of considering application number DR-25-05. And it is now 7:04. And this, the applicant is Access Design Group Architecture and Engineering. Okay, the procedure we'd like to follow tonight is planning commission report, planning, excuse me, planning department report, applicant testimony, proponent testimony, opponent testimony, applicant rebuttal, decision to continue or close the hearing, planning commission discussion and decision. Now, does any commission member wish to disqualify himself or herself for any personal or financial interest in this matter before it's tonight? Or does any commission member wish to report any significant ex parte pre-hearing contacts? Please indicate if you visited the site in connection with this application, starting with Commissioner Weiss.
No ex parte contact. I have driven by the site in the past. I'm mentally familiar with it.
Commissioner Langston?
No ex parte contact or conflict of interest. I've never been on that site.
Commissioner Volbada?
No ex parte contact, no conflicts of interest. I am familiar with the site. I drive by it quite often.
Commissioner Brennan?
No ex parte contact, no conflicts of interest, and I have reviewed the site via like Google Street View.
I have been past it and been on site. No ex parte, no conflict of interest, and I will be participating. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any commission member to hear this matter? Is there any member of the audience who wishes to question the jurisdiction of this body to act on behalf of the city council on this matter? Oregon land use laws require that all issues be raised if the issues are to be appealed. Failure to raise the issues at this hearing may invalidate their further appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA. Any party has the right to request a continuance to this hearing or, in the alternative, to have the record left open for seven days. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the commission to respond to the issue will preclude an action for damages in circuit court. If you are going to testify, please try to address the applicable criteria. Will the staff please present the report?
Thank you, Chair Smith. We're doing a little PowerPoint presentation as well, but we have another modification here for you, a renovation this time. And this one is not one that I think most of us were around when it was originally approved, so it's a fresh renovation for us. Okay, so Ron Tonkin Kia on McLaughlin there. Oops, went the wrong way. Address at 19335 McLaughlin Boulevard. The proposal is design review approval for a facade upgrade. And 1,000, I have 1,350 on the staff report, but it said in the plans, 1,280, I believe, square foot building addition. So somewhere under 1,500 square foot building addition onto that south side of the building. There's no updates proposed with this one to the parking, circulation and landscaping. I know we've reviewed a few renovations of other auto dealerships, but this one wasn't proposing any changes and was found to be in compliance with our standards, going, just using what's already there. So the project site is zoned C3 general commercial. It's at the very north end of the city on McLaughlin, not subject to any environmental overlays, about 2.12 acres in size and commercial conference of plan designation. Our public agency notice was sent out to the applicant, an owner of the subject site, owners of property located within 250 feet of the subject property. That's going to happen one more time next month, and then our new 100-foot parameter will come into play. We also sent agency notice to City of Gladstone Public Works and Engineering, Gladstone Fire, Gladstone PD, Water Environment Services and ODOT, since this is on McLaughlin Boulevard. This site is, like I said, at the north end of McLaughlin for Gladstone city limits. It's adjacent to unincorporated Clackamas County on two sides, McLaughlin Boulevard. And then on the south side is light industrial zoning, a little spot zone there, although it is an auto dealership as well. Automobile service station, car wash or repair garage, body and fender paint shop, sales of new and used vehicles is permitted outright in the C3 zone. So on the left, we have the existing conditions with the hash marked in building addition on the planned southwest corner of the site. On the right, we have the proposed addition showing as part of the dark gray building, and the fire lane is hashed in here. However, if you look at the left side as well, there's no physical changes. This is just showing clearly for the fire department reviewer that the fire lane remains intact and meets the standards of Clackamas County Fire District. So really, the only changes to the site are the facade improvements, the building itself, and then that building addition in that southwest corner of the building. The plans were a little, a little line heavy here and kind of hard to tell what's going on, but I did try to overlay. So this is existing. And so the biggest change with the facade is going to be that large parapet looking top portion, which I should have put this in again, but if you look at the drawing that the architect submitted, it's going to be like a darker color kind of cap on the building. But the amount of glass on the front of the building stays fairly similar to what's there today, which I'll just flip back. So the two story, the second story of glass there does turn into that dark parapet, but it opens up more of the front of the building with the glass storefront enclosure there. Sorry about this. Scroll through. There's a few changes to some of the doors and the windows along the way, but nothing that didn't meet our code standards for building design in the C3 zoning district. So with that, we do recommend approval of this design review application with the standard conditions. And then we have three special conditions of approval. The first one comes right out of the code saying that if, if a 10-foot strip separating parking from, or excuse me, five feet, if the five-foot strip between sidewalk and street and parking on the site is ever used by ODOT to widen the roadway, then the applicant has to move their parking back and put that strip onto their own property. Could result in a reduced area of vehicle parking or vehicle storage. But it is in our code that we do have to require the applicant to acknowledge this. So we'll put this as part of the conditions of approval. It's very unlikely, you know, for the foreseeable future, which in transportation planning is usually at least 20 years out. There's no plans to widen McLaughlin beyond what it is right now. So especially in this location. There's also a really significant grade change in this location. So again, widening seems very unlikely, but this condition does just require the applicant to acknowledge that they would be on the hook to do that if it ever did widen in the future. The second is a condition that ODOT requested to verify that the entry meets the Americans with Disabilities Act. Again, I think in relation to that grade change and the ramp that comes from the sidewalk along McLaughlin. And then finally, our public works department did ask for the condition, which complies with code, to put a public water line easement around the fire system backflow assembly vault. Or perhaps this has already happened and just to submit a copy of that recorded easement. So with that, I believe that is it for our staff presentation. Again, we do recommend approval of this since there's no changes to landscaping or parking, and that's all meeting our code currently. It's a pretty small change to the site from a, from a code review perspective. I think there will be like a dramatic change to the building appearance. And, you know, it's part of the, I think, Kia national brand that they're doing this to meet with. But we do have a applicant representative here, so we can hear more about that if that's a question from the commission.
Commissioners, does anyone have any questions after the staff report?
Nope, I don't have any questions. I'd like to hear applicant.
Okay.
You have one question. Does the applicant need to address any temporary parking issues for construction?
The site is so overparked that also there's no parking requirement. So we have no minimum parking requirement to begin with. So if they reduce their site down to zero, we couldn't require them to do any more.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, is the applicant or his representative present?
I believe the applicant is online and they can unmute themselves if they would like.
Good evening. Do you wish to add anything to the staff report?
Hi, my name is, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Tim Brunner, the principal architect at Access Design Group. And our address is 7410 Southwest Bevillen Road in Tigard, Oregon, 97223. Originally, I was going to have Matthew Oist from my office do the presentation, but he wasn't let in to the meeting. But it's okay. I can just do it real, real quick.
Is that Mason that you're wanting added?
Matthew Oist.
I don't see a Matthew on here unless it's a phone number. If they,
Unless it's M. Oist.
If they're online, if they want to raise their hand, I can let them in if you would like. Yep, okay, hang on just a moment. Mason is.
Our presentation will probably take less time than it will be to let Matthew in. The only thing that I really wanted to clarify on the plan, I know there is a question about parking, but what I wanted to explain is this very small addition, and I don't know if you can pull up that, oh, it's up. Is that plan still up on the screen? Yeah. That small addition that we're doing is just in circulation space. So it's already asphalt pavement and it's kind of circulation area as you come out of the back of what we call the service reception area. So we're not really impacting anything on site by doing that, if that makes sense.
Thank you for clarifying that, Tim, because that would typically be something that might trigger like erosion control or grading requirements, but because it's already in stormwater, but because it's already paved, it doesn't trigger any of that press.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is,
Exactly.
Is the additional traffic that the construction is going to generate, not necessarily the business itself?
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, I mean,
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, sir.
No, I mean, I was just going to say, this is a very, pretty small addition. Any sort of construction does create, you know, some traffic during construction. But, you know, we are coming up with mitigation plans for that. So it will have no impact on the city, you know, city transportation system at all around McLaughlin Boulevard. And, and as was stated, I mean, our site is overparked. So we do have room for vehicles to be parked and, and as necessary. This particular client also owns a property directly across the street at the Hyundai dealership. So if we need extra overflow, we can always use that as well.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Of course.
Any other questions? Okay, now is the time for public testimony. Do we have any testimony?
I've received no requests, and if the person on the phone is wanting to provide testimony, please raise your hand. I do not see a hand raised.
So we have no proponents or opponents or anyone else that would like to speak on this matter?
I have not heard from anyone.
Okay. Now would be the time for any applicant rebuttal, but I don't think that's an issue. If there's no further testimony, I would entertain a motion to either close the public hearing or continue it to a date certain. What's the pleasure of the planning commission?
I'm not sure. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Before we move forward with a second, can I just ask, how do you raise your hand on, if you're dialed in on the phone?
Star nine, I believe.
Yeah.
Star nine, okay.
If you're on the phone and want to star nine, to raise your hand.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Thank you. Just wanted to give an opportunity there.
The motion was made by Commissioner Brennan and seconded by Commissioner Weiss. Roll call vote, please, Tammy.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan?
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes, public hearing is closed at 7:20 PM. Okay, so deliberations, folks?
Actually, I think contrary to the comment earlier, I think four of us were here for, we've seen this before, right? With the addition, not the new.
It might have been the Buick.
We did, we've done Mazda.
Oh, okay. Similar.
I think there was, didn't they do something up on River Road at one point too? But anyways.
The applicant's representative was the same too for Mazda.
Okay.
That might be triggering your memory, the Access Group.
They had like a little property in the back, but I don't. Anyway, no, I don't, it's pretty straightforward. They're just, you know, coming into compliance with their national branding. And yeah, I don't see any issue with.
Well, if someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the application DR 2505 with the following findings and standard conditions, as well as special conditions in support of the approval of the three conditions listed.
A second.
The motion was made by Commissioner Langston and seconded by Commissioner Volbada. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Volbada? Sorry.
Jennifer?
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes. Yeah. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Now we can. Yes, thank you. Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss?
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes, it has been approved. Okay, do we have any business from the public?
I have not received any requests, no.
Okay, how about business from the planning commission? Let's start with you, Commissioner Volbada.
No, I'm happy to be back, looking forward to being back in person next month. And yeah, everything's great.
And how are you surviving motherhood?
It's a blast. Every day, something new. My husband started working in this last week, so we got used to, we got used to one way, and now we're getting used to a new way. But I'm off on maternity leave for a few more months, so thankful for that.
Yes, yes, congratulations on everything.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weiss?
Well, we talked a little bit about the new video sign at Gladstone's, and I appreciate the narrative on the response to that sign. It does have me thinking if every business in Gladstone put up a sign like that, I'm not sure I would love the look of it. And so I've been thinking about 17.52 and how we might revisit that and add some specific verbiage. If the group is interested in kind of visiting that code, I did do a little sample, and it looks like there are, like Happy Valley has some more stipulations around video boards. And I think there, you have to delineate the difference between the like reader board style, which I think has, is less intrusive, and the video style. So I would like to propose that we consider adding that to the docket, a revisit of 17.52 with special consideration for maybe taking a more conservative approach on video signage.
Okay. When would be a good time to do that?
The thing that's in my brain about that is that the city council approves our work plan for a two-year cycle. So we could certainly take it to council. We're approved for what we have said that we'll tackle from here until the end of next year. But we could see about adding, I don't really know, actually. What do you think, Tammy?
If that's something you're wanting to.
That we would take it to council and ask if we can add that to our work program. Um, we did just basically, I think, last, I don't know when it went, but we had, like, we gave them an update, I think in September of where we are.
Yes.
Um, so dang, we could have taken it to them then, but I think we'll have another opportunity to update them or request that.
I would definitely like to see that happen because I'm in agreeance with, with, uh, Commissioner Weiss. I think we as we've been going through each one, line by line, making sure that it's very clearly stipulated. I think this is one that needs to be very clearly defined.
Yep. I don't oppose.
What?
I don't oppose.
Commissioner Brennan?
I would wholeheartedly agree. I think if the, uh, at least one commissioner thinks it's a valid issue, we should at least revisit it.
Yep.
I agree. So I would like to see how we can accomplish that.
We'll, we'll work on figuring out how we do that.
Um. Commissioner Weiss, do you have anything else?
Nope, that was it. Thank you all.
Commissioner Langston?
Uh, no new business for me today. Thank you.
Commissioner Brennan?
Uh, no new business, but I do appreciate the discussion that we can all have up here on the dais. It's very enlightening.
Um. I don't have anything new to add, other than I love that everyone comes prepared and, and we have good, open, honest discussions about what's before us. Um, so that we can look at all options, all avenues, et cetera. It's an honor serving with you guys, so on that note, if any would like, if anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Uh, I do have one more thing.
Okay.
Uh, welcome back, Commissioner Volbada. Very neat.
Yes, welcome back.
Thank you so much.
We've missed you, and I'm very, very happy that you're back. Are you going to bring the baby with you when you come in person?
I sure could, um, just to
I'd be open to that. What about everybody else?
No objection.
Okay, I want to hold that baby. Okay, if anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Langston and seconded by Commissioner Weiss. Tammy, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brennan?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss?
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes, meeting is adjourned at seven twenty seven PM.